I'm just waiting on the sound to go live.
We're ready.
Ready to move.
Sorry. Yes. Very cheap. Yes. This is a new text. I'll get that down.
All right. I think it's time. Can everybody hear okay? Excellent. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November the 18th mid-monthly work session. As you can tell, we've tried to go back to the old times where we had a much more relaxed and informal process. I think it's going to work well. I didn't even wear a tie today, and I feel in place, so that's good. But welcome to the meeting. Kim, at this time, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Anderson. Let the record reflect that Mr. Anderson is not present. Ms. Pillian, present. Ms. Quetch.
Here.
And Mayor Webb.
Here. And I would like to say just real quickly that we are certainly thinking of Mr. Anderson. He's having some temporary health issues is why he can't be here, and we would like to make sure that he knows we're thinking about him. Having said that, at this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and I'll ask Mr. Mike Owens to lead us in the pledge.
That was one thing that we forgot to do before we moved.
So I have to tap it.
That's it.
Tap it.
There it is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good work, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Owens.
You're a true patriot.
That brings us to the approval of the agenda. I think we can approve the agenda as is, Cam, unless you want us to change this, but I think we're going to put the discussion regarding advisory boards and commissions at the end of the agenda instead of the beginning. Do we need to formally adopt that, or that's just a menu for we can play?
Just adopt it as amended.
Okay. All right. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended with moving item H1 to the end of the agenda.
I'll make that motion to amend the agenda, move H1, and leave the remainder of the agenda as is.
Okay. No shame.
Motion by Mr. Owens, second by Vice Mayor Quetch.
Any discussion, counsel? Kim, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Webb.
Aye. All right. That brings us to public comments, and it looks like we do have three persons signed up for public comments. The first one up, if you'll approach the podium, must state your first and last name and mailing address, is Mr. Richard Morgan.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Morgan. I live at 171 Valley Street here in Abington. I'm the son of a veteran of 25 years of military service during World War II in Korea. He also has a memorial tree planted in his honor at Veterans Memorial Park here in Abington, for which I'm very proud. I am appalled at the town of Abington would charge a fee to the Veterans Memorial Park Board to hold a public memorial service on a national holiday, November 11th, Veterans Day. I don't understand why you would do that. This is a special day to honor and remember all veterans. Veterans Day is not a time to collect a few dollars of income for the town, and I'm really disappointed that you all would do that. I have to ask, what's next? Will I finally have to buy a permit from the town to visit my father's memorial tree out there in the park in the future? The way it's going, perhaps it is. After reading some of the comments in the paper this week, I'm wondering if perhaps the town council should consider transferring the veterans' park to Washington County, as our county supervisors have taken a greater interest and more respect for the memorial park, the veterans, and Veterans Day. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Walter Jennings.
My name is Walter Jennings. I'm president of the Historical Society of Washington County, which is at 341 West Main Street. First, I want to pass around our latest newsletters, so everyone has a copy. In case you're not already a new big member of the society, they get them automatically. The second point I'd like to bring up is that I'm interested in this Enhanced Abington Foundation, and I sent an email to the president that was listed on the information that you all received and had made available to the public, and that email bounced back, and I checked with the website, and it was not an active website either. So I would like to find out what's going on with that organization, because I'd like to see if there's any meshing of activities that we can do between the Historical Society and an organization that ostensibly is there to help the historical properties in Washington County or in Abington in particular. Third point I'd like to bring up is a resolution that was adopted by the Board of Directors of the Historical Society, and I'd like to share that with you. The Board of Directors of the Historical Society supports the move of the Confederate soldier statue to the Veterans Memorial Park and the relocation of the General's Monument to the Unknown Confederate section of Sinking Springs Cemetery. Obviously, the two organizations, the county and the town, would have to work together to get that done, and the county has done their half of the heavy lifting by agreeing to remove the statue and the monument. Now the question is, you know, where they will go, and one of the four options that is available under state law is for a municipality to step forward and offer to take that property. Point that I made to the Board of Supervisors is that in 1907, when the statue was put up, there was no Veterans Memorial Park. There was only the Civil War as far as a war that had been fought by the United States and in the United States of America. We didn't have World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the war against terrorism. We didn't have those things, and we didn't have a lot of veterans. We only had veterans from the Civil War, and frankly, on both sides of the Civil War. Now we have a lot of veterans, and we have a Veterans Memorial Park, and it only makes sense to take that statue and repurpose it so that it can stand as a memorial to all veterans, not just of the Civil War, not just for the Confederacy, but all soldiers. And to make that point, I want to refer to an article that was in the 1907 newspaper when the statue was installed on Main Street in Abington. "This is the man whose prototype we will commemorate here in bronze, but ours is not the picture of a dashing cavalier with waving plume and shining spur, but preferably of the old vet out of the tentless bivouac in all the glory of camp and battle sangery, with his face to the front, his watchful eye upon the enemy, his trusty old musket ready to do its deadly work. If there is a thing about him, and we will have him in molded figure unlike his real self, it is the presentable condition of the old pair of socks into which his too often thread-bared trousers were thrust, as a tramped through dust and mire sunshine or storm cheerfully doing his duty." You see him in the picture just as he was, as of old, as he was when fortune deserved him. So it's not solely about the Confederacy or slavery or anything like that. It's about the people from this county and from this community who took up arms because they were asked to. That's true with all of the veterans who are memorialized at the park. That's true with the, regardless of gender, male or female, or regardless of race, but it is to allow the people who are descendants of those people and who respect those people to remember them because the chairs at the table were empty, there was no one coming home from the farm to help, to the farm to help with the harvest. Someone was missing regardless of the war, and that's what the Veterans Memorial Park should be about. So I would, on behalf of the Historical Society and personally, encourage you to consider taking up the resolution of inviting the county to transfer the statue and the monument to the town of Abington so they can be put at the veterans' park in a respectful way. Thank you.
Now we have Mr. Greg Lilly.
I'm Greg Lilly, and I live at 244 Valley Street, East Valley Street. I've talked to most of you over the past year about an arts commission, and my background is when I was in Southern Arizona, I was on the Arts and Culture Commission there. In Williamsburg, Virginia, I was on the Williamsburg area Arts Commission, which comprised of the city of Williamsburg, James City County, and York County. What an arts commission can do is it's an advisory commission to the council on anything that comes up with arts, specifically make recommendations for budget allocation, any kind of public art that might come up for the town council. You'll have a citizens' commission to make recommendations on that. Also, on the other side, working with the area nonprofits, we can bring them together and let them coordinate with each other, such things as scheduling events so they don't over-schedule each other, and also help them advocate to the state and national levels. Lots of times, the smaller ones have difficulty with that, and with a municipality arts commission, they can help out, especially with Richmond and getting funds from that. So what I'd like to do is encourage you to form an Abington Arts Commission, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to help. Thank you.
That concludes the public comments section. Brings us to public hearings, of which we have none. We don't have any proclamations. As we said before, we're going to move that new business to the end of the agenda. So that brings us to, well, we don't have any resolutions, first reading of ordinances, or unfinished business that I know of yet. So that brings up miscellaneous business and communications from the town manager. First up is a presentation of quarterly financial reports, and this will be through October of 2021. Mr. Steve Tropman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Small adjustment, this is a little, this is for four months as opposed to just the first quarter, we were able to pull some numbers together through October, so this gives us a one-third glimpse of our fiscal year. Bottom line for us right now, as we enter into the holiday season, is the finances of the town are in good order. In the packet before you, you'll see that we have a number of cash and investment balances for your consideration that total over $16 million. That includes both restricted and unrestricted cash balances. And if you have any questions as I go through this, please, by all means, let me know. I've broken this out between the different funds. Obviously, the general fund is the most pertinent one because that's where all of our operating activities flow through and from. Our revenues this year, as we, again, through October, our taxes, we're on schedule. Keep in mind that our real estate taxes are due this month in November, so the bulk of our real estate taxes are not reflected in this report, which is through the end of October. Our business licenses aren't due until February, and so they're not reflected here either. But beside that, those two points, as we look at some of the other taxes, let me back up a moment. On the tax level includes our meals and lodging tax, and I'll go into more detail about that and a couple of extra slides, and we're doing very well in those areas. Bottom line is, we're about 25% of our revenue, keeping in mind, even though this is for four months and not three, we have a bulk of our real estate taxes coming due in November, and then, as I mentioned, the license, business licenses in February. So we are on track. The economically sensitive taxes that we collect that are in that top line are really meals, lodging, and sales and use tax. We're doing very well. As I've said many times before, Abington is a remarkable community. The support from the town to our local businesses, particularly the restaurants, and our out-of-town visitors, the tourists that have been coming in for, now that the border is open, the Virginia Creeper Trail, and all of the other activities that we've had thus far this year have really generated substantial revenue for us on meals and lodging. So we are ahead of the game where we anticipated to be, even if we prorate the budgeted amount through October. So as you can see, we're about $511,000 variance where we expected to be on that. The next page is just basically a historical trend for meals and lodging. This is based on fiscal year, so it doesn't include the first four months of this fiscal year, but I wanted the council to see the dramatic drop that we all know that we experienced during the pandemic and how that has been reversed. So we've seen the V in our revenue for meals, lodging, and sales and use. Sales and use was relatively flat, but the, obviously, meals and lodging did take the big dip. And again, keep in mind, this is by fiscal year, not calendar year, so it's one-year snapshot at a time. And if you extrapolate on this trend, you'll see that for this budget year, 2022, we're continuing on the upward trend in those taxes. Expenditures, we're well below where we expected to be on the expenditure lines. A lot of that has to do with the labor market right now. We have several open positions in the town employment roster, and because those positions are open, obviously, there are no salaries, wages, benefits, or taxes associated with that, and so that is reducing our expenditures year-to-date. If you know of anyone looking for a job, we have several possessions available, and it's a great place to work. Any questions on the expenditure side?
Transfers, Steve.
The transfers, this is, when we did the original budget for the SNAP account, which is where all the bond funds were held, all of the bond revenue was recorded and recognized last fiscal year. So this year on the budget, we had anticipated being able to show it, those additional bond revenue as revenue. Talking to our auditors, since it's already been recognized, the money that we didn't spend last year from the bonds basically settled down into the general fund, and so we have to transfer it out of the general fund over to the capital projects fund, and so that's where, we didn't budget for that amount, but it's a transfer out or an expenditure from the general fund, it's going to show as a transfer in or a revenue, top-line revenue on the capital projects fund. So those two will wash itself out when we merge the two funds together. So that was a kind of an accounting thing that we had to deal with vis-à-vis the budget versus actual accounting metrics.
Did you get all that?
I got it.
Okay.
Do attorneys understand accounting?
Yep.
I'm teasing.
Moving on to the wastewater fund, again, this is our sewer fund. It's an enterprise fund, totally separate from the general fund, although we do have some transfers back and forth to accommodate particularly on our wages, because we do have some allocations of salaries. But on the revenue side, we're about 26% at this point in time. The service fees, which is really the one thing that we need to measure, is on track for the year. Similar to the general fund, on the expenditure side, we are below where we expected to be. We have a number of open positions on the sewer fund side as well, and as you'll recall, there'll be some changes effective January on how our expenses will be monitored and accounted for, because it's with a contract service operator, we're basically going to have some allocated salaries and then a contractual services agreement. So then we'll continue to have capital outlay because we still own the asset on the service side.
And just to add that, for the, as far as the salaries portions, of course, they're going to be a little bit smaller than they were. Small portions of certain administrative employee salaries will still be, there'll be a partial allocation from the sewer fund, like finance and engineering, but smaller amounts.
People that are working here.
Yeah, mostly people that are working here, but smaller percentages than there were because some of the administrative work has been transferred, but that's why there'll still be some.
Exactly. And also, an important note is that we will continue to do all the billing. That is not being contracted out. So all the revenue associated with wastewater and the billing services that we provide for that are still going to be handled by town employees. We have two other funds. As you know, we created the ARCA fund to address the money that we receive from the U.S. Treasury for the relief, and we also have the Capital Improvement Fund, those two funds. The Capital Improvement Fund, by and large, is the Meadows Project, although we do have some other things. The Fields Penthouse was in there last year for the renovations, and it's also included in this pledge as well. On the Capital Improvement Fund, the revenue that you see there, that is, again, that transfer from the general fund is reflected as a revenue on this fund. But that cash was actually received last year in the bond issue. On the ARCA side, we've generated a little bit of interest on the money that we received in June. You'll see on here that we, the council was anticipating that the entire $4 million this fiscal year, we actually received it on June 30th, the last day of last year, so that was placed in a deferred revenue account, and we will recognize that revenue this year as we expend the money. So when we send the money out for either the trussel repairs, the Meadows Project, wastewater or stormwater management, or the Green Spring Road, those were the four projects that the council had approved earlier this year. As we expend money, we will recognize the revenue out of the deferred revenue account. That's why you don't see the $4 million having actually been received yet this year. We'll recognize it when we use it. On the expense side, the Capital Improvement Fund, that is the, again, the ongoing expense associated with completing the Meadows Project. We're getting very, very close. It's looking beautiful, but that's what the expenses are in that capital improvement plan, plus there's some money in there too for the field spend renovation and restoration. That should be completed, I understand, by December.
Well, it might go into March.
Oh?
Well, they're not going to move it until March, but is everything going to be done by December?
We hope that we will be able to move our offices in the end of year.
Oh, I see. You'll do all the planning and stuff, so, okay. My bad. It probably won't be done in December.
We'll be in there soon. And soon is relative.
It'll be substantially complete in December, that'll be for sure.
Yeah. And what they've done is absolutely beautiful. Looks gorgeous. That's really...
Just a question. The $4 million of that ARCA fund money that we received in the last year's budget, and we will show that transferred over into this budget as it is spent?
That's exactly right.
What if we don't spend the full $4 million? Will that be transferred into 23?
Right, and that's why we're going to leave it in the deferred revenue account, because, let's say we only expend $3 million, there's still going to be a million-plus dollars in the deferred revenue account, so the next fiscal year, when we use that money, we'll recognize it as we use it. It'll carry over. And we still don't know for sure. Now, according to the Treasury and the state, the next tranche of money, which is going to be equal to the $4 million that we already received, we may get it on June 30th again, or it may be July 1st of the next fiscal year. We're not sure. But if we do get it in June 30th, let's say, because they're supposed to do it within exact, you know, within a year, we'll do the same thing. We'll receive the money, but we'll put it in a reserved, a deferred revenue account, and again, expend it as we use it. As far as expenditures from the ARCA fund, we did, as the council had indicated, we're going to use the money for the Meadows. One of the change orders was to install the lights at the Meadows, and the bulk of this money that we've expended... lights at the Meadows, and the bulk of this money that we've expended thus far was to pay for those lights. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate you.
You always do a great job explaining numbers.
Or confusing some.
That brings us to the discussion regarding the memorandum of understanding between the Enhanced Abingdon Foundation and Town of Abingdon, Virginia, and bylaws of Enhanced Abingdon Foundation. Mr. Morant?
Yes. I don't know why the bylaws are on a, we're, we're going to talk about just the agreement with the, regarding the Enhanced Abingdon Foundation. So as you recall, the, at the last, I think it was the last work session, we presented a draft, and it was a preliminary draft. Cam, review it. And what you see on here, this redlined version, is essentially just some changes that he made. Some of them are, some of them are technical, but I would say the major changes that were made, there was this mutual indemnification that you didn't think was necessary to put in there for some legitimate, valid legal reason, I'm sure. Several, several reasons. So, and then, yeah, pretty much, it was in the same form, other than, like I said, a few, a few technical changes, just to basically just establish, if you recall, just establishing their, their relationship between the town and the foundation to ensure that there's cooperation and that organizations, that the town recognizes the organization's goal of funding, or fundraising for, to, to further town initiatives. So...
Is there anything that you want to add to this, Steve?
I, I think one of the, another purpose of the MOU, again, as we discussed before, because the, the foundation itself has no asset, and we have no right to install the giving tree or anything else like that on town property without the town's permission, because these are two completely separate entities, that the MOU at least establishes a relationship where we can have a giving tree at the Meadows to recognize donations to the foundation. And so it was, and basically, that was one of the other reasons to, you know, for the, have an MOU.
And I think generally, just like we've been working with all the other third-party entities that the town deals with, of having something in writing that delineates who's doing what, and so there's no confusion going forward as to what the actual agreement is and who's responsible for what. And that, you know, in addition to that, keeps this separation between these kind of related entities.
Any questions, council?
I don't.
For Jim?
Now, we will be bringing this back for a future meeting for formal adoption, and then we'll be working with Cam, get the necessary resolution, whatever we need to establish the relationship between the two entities.
One good question I got, just for clarification, and I know you've told me once, but I don't remember.
Right.
Who will be setting the bylaws for this foundation, the town, or the?
No, not the town, just the, the foundation.
Foundation would.
Yeah.
And the foundation has adopted bylaws already.
Yeah.
By, by the existing board. And one other important note about the MOU, it does establish, if you will, some, maybe a sense of, I, I don't want to say credibility, but at least for a donor who wants to donate money to the Enhanced Abingdon Foundation, it gives them some sense of an assurance that the money indeed is going to go to the town for the purpose for which the foundation was created. And in order to assure that, or ensure that, we have this written agreement and an acknowledgement that you acknowledge we exist, and our purpose is indeed to fund the town, you know, those historical properties, recreational facilities, recreational parks, playgrounds, educational opportunities, things of that nature.
Like, you know, speaking of historical properties, because it was mentioned in public comments, if somebody wanted to make a donation to rehabilitate or enhance a historical property, they could make a contribution to, to the foundation, who in turn can turn that over to the, to the town. It could be restricted, but like Steve said, this, this is the mechanism to basically establish that legitimacy, so people would know, hey, this is, this is the formal relationship between the town and the organization. And some people do sometimes are hesitant to write a check to the town if there's no, you know, strings attached. But with a, with a private foundation and then an agreement between the town, it makes it clear, I think, that it's to be used for that purpose.
That's a perfect sentence. But that's also the reason why the website doesn't work?
I do, that would be a foundation issue also.
Because it hasn't, it doesn't.
Have we gone, Mark, yet with the website?
Because it, none of that stuff is... That's a foundation issue. That's not a foundation.
That is a foundation issue. And if you will, let me address it from the foundation.
Sure.
I'll put my foundation hat on. You know, there are obviously, not significant, but substantial startup costs for the foundation. We had filing fees, we had a number of other things, and the website itself costs money. We do have a local business that has pledged, basically, our first-year operating expenses as a contribution to the foundation, but before, we can contract with the web developer, which we've already spoken to them, so we do have a price for it. We've secured, we were able to go ahead and secure the URL and all that, but we couldn't go live until we had, I'm not a web designer. You don't want to see what I'd have up there. It's, you know, it's probably a 404, did not...
Yeah.
So anyway, that's why the, the website is not live. And the other thing we were waiting on also was our IRS determination letter. We had applied for our tax exemption status back in July, and we were very fortunate to get the IRS determination letter sooner than we thought, which was in September. No, I've been on...
Not yet.
Was it September?
I think September.
It was September or October. So anyway, you know, we're, we're fully certified with the state of Virginia. We now have our IRS determination letter. We have a pledge from the local business to help fund those local expenses, so that we can get the website up and running, and then, then we'll be on our way.
It just takes time.
So it takes time.
It takes some time.
She'd accomplished a lot in her time period.
Yeah.
All right. So that brings us to discussion regarding the train depot. Ms. Tripple.
Train whistle?
Good afternoon. Good to see you all. As you may remember, a few years ago, we, we signed a lease for the passenger station in Depot Square with the Historical Society of Washington County. The Historical Society purchased a new building across the street, and they moved out of the depot, and we had a tenant who subleased that building from the Historical Society. That lease was up in October, and the tenant has moved out. So we have the depot station open at this time. I know we've talked about doing some different projects at the station, but during this time, we've had a discussion with the Abingdon Market, Farmers Market, and they are interested in occupying, occupying the station on Fridays and Saturdays from 2:00 to 6:00 for November the 26th through December the 18th. They would need an hour prior to get ready for the market to be open at 2:00, so they're going to need to be in there at 1:00, and then they're going to need an hour to unload past 6:00. So it'd be 7:00, 7:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. Each vendor who would like to get a space in the market would pay $20 per day to be in that space. So it would extend, give the capability to the market to extend their hours into December. And if you all are up for it, I'd like to write an MOU to allow them to use that, and then maybe even give them more flexibility into January, February, and March. And then in April, they would move back to the Market Pavilion to have the spring and summer markets. So David McLeish is here today. David, do you want to add?
Well, Saturday morning, we'd still be at the market, because the farmers can. Obviously, unload a lot of stuff and bring it down those stairs. That's why we were shooting for 2:00 to 6:00 and give a little break in between. But we look forward to trying to work with the town and hopefully bring some more people into town.
Council, any questions for Tanya or David, or, I think Brooks Haden back there, maybe?
Brooks.
Yeah, Brooks Haden will be in.
I'm just here with some colleagues.
And this is, this is not, this is something that we're just trying to look at.
Sure.
You know, as you recall, you know, we did, we did an RFP, you did receive a proposal. We met with that, that entity, and, you know, after discussions with staff, we figured if we're going to, if we're going to do anything, and you have multiple users in the building, it would, it would be best to have the town maintain that oversight and make sure that we're in control of the facility. And so that's kind of, this is really sort of a transitional type of a, of a program that we're doing. And we don't know what the long-term future's going to be. We're still in the process of developing some ideas for that. But this is just to get the, get the use, you know, in the, in the wintertime, although the building's not going to be used possibly in the wintertime, this is to get, you know, some more people into town, like, like David said. So I think it's a win-win.
Dave has agreed also to collect our fees, if that's okay with you guys. He would be glad to collect the fees.
As long as he gives it to us.
Passes it on.
So I, we had a public hearing to do the RFP, and I think that would be sufficient to cover if we were, and I think generally, a public hearing you have is just whether you're going to lease it out.
Well, we would probably do a lease, though. Would we just do it? Would you still determine it as a lease?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's going to be use of the building, something that probably funds it.
Yeah, that means we would have to do it if somebody else came around to it.
I think that that initial public hearing, because it covered that property, is probably good enough that we have one at all. This situation, we maybe need to think about that. And then, I guess, just the parameters of what it would be, if we're going to charge, and it's how much, and other requirements. I assume that that would be similar to what we've done before, insurance and that sort of thing, but things to think about.
Yeah, because we could have another user that could potentially want to use it, say, like on a Wednesday night. And so if we didn't do it, if, if we did it that way, then we'd have to have a public hearing every time we did that. So it seems to me that if we did this and we just brought it before council, every time we had maybe a user, that maybe we could just do it that way. I don't know. Think about it.
Well, I think it's an interesting use of, of the property, and I, I personally hear nothing but good things about the farmer's market. So, you know, I, I always use this as a, as an example, but I have relatives that are in Bristol, Tennessee, and they actually drive to Abingdon for the farmer's market. So, so I think, yeah, I mean, I think it's a great, a great idea. I'd love to see what happens. I mean, I think it could be a huge success. So thanks for stepping up.
We actually have people that don't, for this and restaurant.
I have no doubt, I have no doubt.
I mean, I have regular customers from North Carolina, Tennessee.
Like I said, it's all good, so...
They drive. We actually have a vendor that drives all the way here from Nicholsville, because this is the best market.
I think so, but I'm kind of partial, so.
Have you asked your current vendors if they have interest?
I, I have asked current vendors, and right now, I have at least about 13 that are interested.
Are there any new vendors that potentially, or is that not allowed?
Well, they have to be a, a member of the market to be part of it, but I do, I constantly, every week, I have people inquiring to become vendors. So I'm working with somebody right now from White Top that is looking to become a vendor of our market.
I wondered if you guys had, like, a wait list, because I assume all the parcels are...
All the season spots are taken. What I'm taking now are daily vendors that fill in.
Okay.
We had 42 vendors on Saturday.
Okay.
Probably about 700 customers in two-hour market. So...
Impressive.
Keeps me busy.
I bet. Well, like I said, great idea. I think it's, it's going to be exciting to watch and see how it progresses. Council, any other questions?
I will work with Cam on, on preparing the necessary agreements and bring anything we need to the council.
Sure.
Upon his review of...
We look forward to next time, yeah?
Thank you.
So that brings us to the discussion regarding council meeting dates for January through July. Six months. It's a long time to look at, Cam.
Can I make a recommendation or a request, or a...
Sure.
I would love it if we did not meet the week of the 4th of July. I don't know if it's possible to move that organizational meeting.
We can't.
Although it will no longer be our organizational meeting.
Yeah, it won't be an organizational meeting anymore, so we could always...
Plus, that's the next six months. You have to wait until next year to plan that.
Yeah, you can't, can't plan July now.
Oh, so we're just going through July?
Yeah. We're going up until 30th.
Okay, well, then never mind. We'll talk about that next time. We'll talk about that next time, sorry.
We'll be, that'll probably be an April discussion.
Sorry. Jumping the gun.
But now you can look, now you can maybe look. I gotta look if you went July 4th actually this year.
I don't know.
Let's, one of my schedules out.
You're fine.
It's actually on the Monday. July 4th on the Monday.
All right. So I guess we're first looking at January, is that correct?
Correct. I see it's going to be the 3rd, first Monday?
So the 3rd of January. Looks like it'll be it for the regular scheduled formal council meeting. And if we stay true to form, and we wait about two weeks later, that puts us in that 17th through 21st range. What about the 18th or 19th?
I'm good with...
Work with everybody?
19th.
Y'all prefer Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Well, only because Monday's a, it's a holiday, and it would just be easier, I think, to have a day, staff preparation.
All right, let's do the 19th. So January the 19th, we're going to leave that at 2:30? Everybody? Okay. So January the 3rd and January the 19th. That brings us into February. So it looks like our regular scheduled council meeting will be the 7th. And two weeks later, what about the 24th, the 30th of that week?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Cam, you okay with that?
Yes.
2:30 it is. And that brings us into March. The 7th will be our first meeting. Am I looking at that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, two weeks later would put us in the 21st through the 25th. What about Thursday, the 24th?
I have a meeting in Richmond on the 24th. Well, I don't know where it is, but...
What about the 23rd?
The 23rd and 24th, I will be gone.
Okay. So let's back up to, because that month is rather short. So let's back up to the week before, and I know it's going to not push us out two weeks. What about the 15th to the 16th?
Yeah.
Let's do the 16th. How about that?
That work for you, Mike?
Yep.
Okay.
That's a Wednesday.
Yep, it's a Wednesday. So March the 7th and the 16th, we're going to get a lot done this first two weeks of March.
The only, the only thing I was going to, when do we usually do the budget? We got to figure out, because we, we might do a separate, maybe a separate, we can always do a separate work session for the budget if we have to. I just want to make sure it's not too early for that, or if we have...
March is going to be too early.
Oh, okay.
It's just earmarked.
That's fine. No, that's fine. We could just do that as a next one.
It works.
Because things like changed completely with COVID and everything, and I'm trying to remember when we actually were ready, and it was his first year in the budget.
Absolutely, absolutely. So April, that puts us on the 4th for our regular meeting. And two weeks later, would put us on the week of the 18th to the 22nd. What about the 21st, that Thursday?
It's good with May.
Okay. So April the 4th and the 21st. And that brings us to May, which looks like a crazy month. Busy. It's bad. I'm scheduled out that far. Our regular scheduled meeting will be on the 2nd. And pushing two weeks forward would put us on, what about the 19th, that Thursday? Is that okay? And remember, we can always change these around if we have to. It just helps, Cam, to get our next six months in line. Correct, Cam? All right. And that brings us to June. The 6th would be our regular meeting. I will tell you guys, I'm going to be out of town that week. I don't know if you guys want to deal with that.
We have a vice mayor.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to give you that heads up.
I say we move it up a little.
Let's just do two meetings in May. There's five Mondays.
That's it. What about the 13th? Would that be okay with you all?
It's okay.
It's okay with you.
Okay.
All right. So let's move it to the 13th.
So are we talking about the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Because I'm.
Okay.
No, that's okay. I mean, that actually might be not a bad thing with, with the budget and everything. It would actually give an extra week to, to have it presented. So, I mean, that's certainly not going to create problems for us.
And then we could move to work session to.
If we need a work session that month. I mean, the budget's done if possible, we might not need one.
Tentatively plan a work session for the 23rd, that Thursday.
Yeah, that would be good.
And that'll give us the option.
About 10 days in between us.
Yep. Because everybody knows budget time is wild.
We might be ready to take a break after that. We have a work session.
Just have that work session days. Okay. Is that okay with everyone?
Oh, that's why you don't.
All right. Got the next six months of our lives.
I got it.
That's it.
Plan everything else we do around that.
That's it. All right. So now we can take up item which want new business discussion regarding advisory boards and commissions, Mr. Moran.
Okay, I've got several things we wanted to talk about. We did distribute a draft of, of a proposed, I guess it would, it would have to be prepared in the form of an ordinance, but this did, here are just some bullet points, which Kim went through and made a few changes. Just essentially a framework for if we did an arts commission, what, what it would look like. I'm really just here to discuss it and see if there's any feedback. It's just a starting point. It certainly, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of things that, I didn't want to make it too detailed. I was concerned of making it too detailed, then, you know, I think the roles of the, of the, of the commission will start, start to develop based on what the council's expectations are, you know, once it's established. So I didn't really want to get too, too far into the weeds with it, but make it, you know, clear enough as far as what the structure is and what, what the duties are. So really just open for any suggestions, comments.
The structure of that is similar to other ones that we have by ordinance, set up and down. That entity created within, created some of all of it and those sort of things.
So procedurally, how do we have to approach this?
You mean to create it?
Yeah, to create.
We'd have to adopt an ordinance to create it. So this would have to be placed in ordinance form.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
If you wanted to, well, there are lots of things that you could do, but I think that would be the anticipation, there would be a formal commission.
That'd be consistent.
I mean, we've got informal ones or whatever.
Yeah, you would technically, you could just say we establish it. If you wanted to make it more formal and put it in the, in the code, I guess you could adopt ordinance. That's what I was expecting, but.
Yeah, that's kind of the direction we're headed is formalizing a lot of these commissions, correct?
Okay. How long would that take if we started on that process now?
Um, well, I, I, we could get it on the next regular meeting agenda if we wanted to. And, and that's why I wanted to get all this done for this meeting in case everybody was comfortable where we were at, or if we had to make a few changes, we could get it ready to go.
Why are you comfortable with this?
I think, I mean, and I, I think it's great. I'm actually surprised we haven't approached this before now, considering how artsy much of Abingdon it is. So, so I think it's great. I think we, it's a fantastic idea.
I mean, going back to Kim's question, I mean, is it something that you want to put in ordinance form and put it in? Hey, you do, okay. Just want to formalize it.
But I think that's kind of the direction we're headed with, with all the commissions and things that we have is, is formalizing.
Yeah, I think it just brings a little bit more legitimacy to it.
Sure.
If we adopt it and incorporate it in part of the town code, especially, you know, terms and things of that nature. I knew a few commissions we've done adopted either by resolution, but they're not actually in, in the code. Yeah, it would be nice to get all those, those advisory committees and boards and stuff as part of our code.
Just makes it clear.
Well, people, it's more transparent too. People can see it and say, hey, here's this committee in this commission if it's serving in an advisory capacity. There are some that are, you know, statutory as far as like planning commissions, only where those are always going to be in the code regardless because they're required by law, but these are just really up to the discretion of the council.
It also helps with funding, correct?
Yeah, I think it brings, it brings some legitimacy because, yeah, if we, if we were trying to apply for a grant, we could say, look, we have an arts commission, here's the town's ordinance. We're committed towards, you know, furthering arts and culture in the community. So, yeah, I think it certainly helps.
Well, I, I personally think we ought to approach it, you know, in, in a fairly expedited manner, just to get it and clean it out.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all. So I was expecting to go in that direction, you know, pending any changes that everybody would have. And, you know, we, we bring it up first reading at the meeting on December the 6th and if you guys are fine with it and maybe there's some feedback or something you thought about, we can always change it at the first meeting in December. But if you are comfortable where it's at, we can just adopt it and dispense the second reading. I don't think it's anything that's going to create any issues if we, if we, if we have a second reading on it since, anyway, just my thoughts. Yeah. The other thing that it's been kind of a long process because there's been a lot, a lot going on here in the town and in between that, working on this, the arts commission. Another, another board that we were looking at establishing is, you know, there obviously has been some discussion recently about the Veterans Memorial Park and, and the role of the town. And so we, you know, we, we thought it might be a good idea as a town, as a town advisory board to have a veterans advisory board of the town. Now, I think there is some confusion because the Veterans Memorial Park Foundation is a 501(c)(3) and they don't own the park. I think there's, there's some confusion. So they're not an entity of the town. They are a separate entity. And I think, you know, based on my discussions with some council members and, and recent developments, that we thought it would be a good idea to make sure it's clear that if we had a, if the town had its own veterans advisory board, there would just be a clear distinction between what the nonprofit's doing and what they're doing versus what, what the town's advisory board is doing. But in addition to not just the Veterans Memorial Park, but some of the comments I got was, hey, we could do other things to promote veterans in the community, recognize veterans in the community, identify programs and, and even potentially work with some of the veterans organizations like the VFW and even the Veterans Memorial Park Foundation collaboratively. So I, you know, Kim and I have done some research on, on types of boards that other communities have, just to get some ideas on, on what we could do. I'm, I'm happy to continue that research if, if that's a direction we want to go. I don't have anything formal to present, but before I did any more, you know, work on this or presented anything back to the, to the council, I just wanted to make sure that that was something you wanted us to continue to work on, so.
I think so.
Anything, okay?
I, I think in the past that it's kind of, the waters have kind of got muddied between what the town does and what the nonprofit does. So I think this would help clean some of that up.
Okay. Okay. So no, no objections and I'll just continue to develop something and bring it back for a future meeting and.
Sure.
We can continue the discussion at that time. The other thing related to boards and commissions is, I really think something we ought to consider looking at is, now remind me, Kim, what the term is again, the one.
Standard of excellence.
The standard of excellence, sort of like a, I'm not saying it's like a code of conduct, but sort of like a standards of excellence. So when somebody comes in and is serving on a board, any board in the town, there's just a level of expectation of, you know, potential conflicts of interest, potential, you know, making sure they're adhering to FOIA, you know, just certain things, understanding that it is an important role that they're taking when they're being appointed to, to a town board or a commission and, and sort of develop some, some guidelines and some standards of conduct for every, for every individual who's appointed by the council. These are council appointees. So, I mean, the town council did a code of ethics, you know, years ago and, and, you know, we can always look at doing something, incorporating some of the aspects that are in that and, and looking and revisiting our, our code of ethics and, and looking at that as well. But I know we have one currently that's in existence. So just, you know, like I said before, similar to the previous issue, if, if it's something you think it's a good idea, we'd like to develop something.
And you have to remind me, I can't remember if this was last year or maybe the year before, I can't, it's just been a little while, but didn't we, Kim, go through some of the committees and commissions we had and kind of shore up some of the, the language and verbiage in those before? And so this kind of lines up with what we were doing before, just sort of standardizing all of that stuff into one.
Well, this would be, yeah, and this wouldn't be anything that would be in the ordinance or anything like that. This would be something that we would develop and we would just share, like, so when they became appointed to a board, we would say, here's your informational packet. It gives us a little bit more information about what their duties are and their roles are. Kim's got some resources from some of her.
But it's kind of across the board though for all of them, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It wouldn't be for one specific committee.
Yeah.
So it just would be any, any board and commission that they were appointed to. It's like when they got their letter that said, hey, you've been appointed, and Kim usually sends those out, there would be a packet as far as, hey, because some of them might not even know.
Right.
Oh my gosh, if I, you know, we've been doing some FOIA training with some of the advisory boards. We started that a couple of weeks ago, I think, and we've done two already. We've had Kim come to those meetings and some, I think some of them don't realize that, you know, if you get like three or four people together and, you know, in a room and you're talking about an, an issue or a topic that's germane to that committee, you technically would be in violation of the, you know, you formally have a meeting. So sorts of things like, hey, you know, it's, it's your responsibility to adhere to, you know, the Freedom of Information Act, also things of nature of just making sure that, you know.
Just hold people.
Personal, hold people accountable. I mean, there's things like people will make comments and they might represent, there might be a blurry line between what they're representing, like say maybe there's a personal comment, but they're sitting in this capacity in a board, making sure that they're clear that, hey, this is my personal opinion versus this is my opinion as, sometimes communities can get, I don't think we've had an issue with that here, but a lot of times people will speak on behalf, just make sure that they're identifying themselves as an individual. Like if I made a public comment and it was my personal feeling, I would want to make sure that that was being done me as an individual, not as, you know, not as a town employee on certain things. So just things of that, just to make sure they understand. But we, we're just, this is just in the beginning stages of formulation. Kim has got some resources that she provided me that, that we had looked at from some of her clerk training and I thought it was a really good idea. So I just wanted to present it to everybody and see what they thought.
Well, I think having expectations outlined too is helpful because I know that we've had some boards that people have been appointed to that then people didn't attend the meetings. And so, you know, several meetings in a row and maybe they didn't know that attendance was mandatory or attendance, you had to attend so many meetings during the course of the year reappointed.
Right.
So I think that explaining that to people would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that generally, Derek, to merit to your point is, lots of things have happened over years and years and years and it's happened for different reasons and different people have done them and there's a lot of ad hoc sort of things. And so standardization of everything is preferred definitely from my perspective.
I think so. I mean, I just think we're trying to be more consistent and this sort of lines up with that consistency and, you know, expectation and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
Was it reading right, but knowledge is power.
Yeah. And I think having one, you know, catch-all instead of having one each by, by committee makes it easier for everybody because really the expectations are the same. I mean, everybody has to really follow the same sort of guidelines. It's just, they might be dealing with different issues at their committee level, but there's always going to be, you know, a standard set of guidelines that everybody has to follow. So. Well, Kim and I will work on something and maybe that's probably something we'll have to take up in January. But it's not something I think that's an immediate rush, but it's something before we, before we did any more work, we just wanted to see what everybody's appetite was. We wanted to continue to work on developing that, so.
Absolutely. All right. So that concludes that discussion. Council member reports. Do we have any council member reports? Anybody?
I'll just give you an update on our last meeting where you had given the historical preser, or we had given the historical preservation review board the green light to develop expansion of the historic district and education and other things. And so we met last night and Myanna has identified the properties that are in the state footprint that we are not part of, which we should be part of. So we will start to, an education process to educate these individuals and people in